All right, call this meeting to order. Welcome.
Councilmember Todd. Is absent. Councilmember Saper.
Here.
Councilmember McGraw.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
All right, thank you. But if we need to land, we lay by not something for comment. But councilmember. For the favor, there we go. All right.
The allegiance we apply of the United States of America and to the Republic, our richest states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, next up, approve of the agendas or motion to approve. Yeah.
Yeah, um, I wanted to briefly poll my nine.
Um, sure. Nine, ten, all right, nine, ten will be the first item on the regulation. Further.
Would you approve the amended agenda?
Yes, sir. All in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Which takes us to. So, we'll come to the public, anyone to the public which will speak this evening, please step up to the mic. All right. I'm just doing down here. Uh, next up, the same agendas or motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Right now takes us to United States of America. Number nine and number ten. Number nine, resolution four, rebuilding together in city minor home repair and modification program. Resolution number two, four, year six four. All right, welcome.
Um, so a big fan of these programs. I'm curious, do we have stats on how many, how many of the funds that we've used and how many homes or anything that we can point to?
So do not because the reports for these particular contracts are due three days after the end of the last contract, which is actually the thirtieth of this one. So I will have the stats in the reports at the end of. I do have a representative here who goes from NNI.
Okay. Do we have any information that we can go on?
I do know that, at least from my interactions, the program, it's not a question of is there enough interest and is there enough people who could qualify? And again, some of that is, um, they have been contacted by people who live in rental units as well as people who do not meet the financial thresholds for the programs.
All right, it is kind of a catch 22. That's why, that's the gist of my question is, are we getting the right qualifications? So we can approve with as many funds as we want, but if nobody qualifies. It was controversial last time to the piece of it, should we open this to people who rent? That's more often than not, those who need the money to make the fixes than their landlord or not do it. Rick Barnes has had his landlord, so how do we, how do we thread that needle? It's tough to approve a new contract with no information on how the last one. So we have a rep, do we have any information on that?
Oh, sorry. Yes, please, yeah, sorry everyone at home can hear as well. Thank you.
I'm Northland Neighborhoods. Um, we have helped numerous residents in North Kansas City with other funding sources from federal and local, um, either Clay or Flat County. We have not spent any of the $20,000. Now, we do have several in line that are seniors, uh, where we can help them with the aging place and the modifications or so forth, but at this time, no, we have not spent, we have that money down from.
So there's two separate ones, neither of those have got any money expended?
Um, we have some north family who has still, uh, right, it's never.
But you're on ten.
Right, and I don't have a representative here for them to live together in Kansas City. They have a little bit of a different focus.
Right.
Um, they do work hand in glove with Northland Neighbors, but they do quite a bit of the home modifications. I mean, that's money has had a medical, it's been in their life. Um, it either permanently affects their mobility or temporarily affects their mobility, so they may have a ramp for six to 12 months. Um, they may even have a higher school toilet installed, grab bars, that type of thing. Northland Neighbors does some of that work as well, but they each are the receipt of different styles of philanthropy and grant funding. So they kind of have a conversation between the two that makes more sense for us to do this because we have, we compare the city's local funding with state funding and receive out that person at a higher, better cost.
Are you, um, because you have other funding sources, are those funding sources being tapped by, by the end of the year or are there, is there still more money in those coffers?
We will have this set down.
Okay. Okay, um, my follow on these is I'm happy to approve the funding. I think it's a good program, but I would hesitate to approve it as it is right now if, if we're not spending any of it. None of it's getting used due to something. We can take a look at how do we get these funds out into the community? So I know people, I think people know about it. I don't know how much they know, it's, it's in every newsletter, but this stuff. And then we get questions on, you know, community pages, hey, hey, can I, can somebody help me with this? There's this program, but then they might not qualify. So I, do we need to approve this now or it's going to lapse?
What do you, sorry, I'm just trying to try and understand this here too. We've never spent a dollar on any of these programs, is that?
No.
I'm just hearing, okay.
It's just this past year.
Last year we did not.
Yeah, 23, 24. Um, previously we have.
Okay.
Um, and we had numerous councils where we have funding sources for the cost of probably 15 to 20,000 dollars in repairs, whether it was windows, doors, roofs. One thing was talking earlier, the problem we have is the income threshold. Everything's so expensive now and HUD has not changed their income limits. So that's what we're running into is people are applying and they're just over that 80% AMI limit where we are, you know, our hands are tied and that's what we, you know, that's the guideline.
So they're, they're maybe somewhere between the 80 and the, and the AMI for them generally? Okay. So is it per contract that we only spend dollars on at each AMI? Do we choose just to follow the HUD number or is that something we've done?
That's kind of a guideline that Northland Neighborhoods has. We have one or two other funds that have a higher limit than that, but the majority of all of our programs is 80% AMI.
Okay, so that's something we can get out tonight if we're interested in modifying that part of it. I'm trying to find the contract while I'm talking. It's not going well.
Do I have numbers on how many applicants we've turned away?
Um, not specifically from North Kansas City. I mean, we turn away, doesn't that we, you know, North, you know, Flat County, um, just because of the threshold.
So if the contract doesn't specify program thresholds, I mean, that, if the city council would like our partners to come back and talk about program design, that's something that's not captured or that we actually pick out. Our program partners kind of come back and talk about program design. I do know that a lot of what they do specifically, NNI does though, is that they use our local match as part of a cash upfront to obtain higher grant funding or repairs. That may.
May be a bit tricky. I don't know enough and I, I don't want to speak on behalf of, of state and federal HUD, HUD grant funding, but if our threshold doesn't meet theirs, that could impact the amount of work and help that they are able to provide.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it does. I, I would be happy to maybe, I mean, our next meeting's in a week. Could we punt a week and then talk about program design?
I can reach out to them. I don't know their schedules.
Sure.
But I can absolutely ask to see if I can get them both to come. If you can kind of get with me to see if you'd be able to join us next, next month. Again, it's a little bit of a reporting issue that we get the report 30 days after because they could have somebody come in this week.
Sure.
And then want to appropriate that work to last contract, there's still 11 days left. Do you know what I mean? So that's why we had the report come later.
But, you know, 95% of a year's worth of report is better than nothing at all that we see right now. So even if we could get some, like, the numbers are there, they just haven't been cobbled into a report. If we could see what we, what we're looking at now, um, that would be very useful to inform how we could make this more useful for you.
Sure.
All right, there we go. So I guess, just winning here from Kansas, council interested in holding for a week and doing that. There we go. So then we will hold this item for a week and discuss again at the next meeting. Huh? Oh, yeah, 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 nine, ten.
Yeah, nine and ten.
No, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just say we're holding it. I didn't see any dissent on holding it, so. With, okay, with no dissent, we'll hold nine and ten. Thank you. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, number thirteen.
Approval of 2024 tax levy. Bill number 7873, ordinance number 9670, and it'll open with a public hearing.
There we go. Um, so do I need to, the, the public hearing's just open, right? Just declare it open? Or they have to motion it?
Move to open the public hearing.
There we go. Is there a second? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. We now have an open public hearing. Now we'll do a staff report.
Will you close the public hearing before the staff report?
No, do the staff report and then we will allow public comments and then we'll close the public hearing.
Uh, deeping. Mayor, members of the council, um, so yes, this is the annual, um, uh, tax levy ordinance. We receive valuations from the county on September 10th and then turn that around to the state auditor's office to give us our, our tax rate ceiling for the next year. Because this is an even year, the, the county did not do assessment or do reassessments, so very minimal growth. And actually on our personal property, it went down and usually that's because either a business sold off a bunch of equipment. We see similar increases in, in other years. So overall, about a 1% increase on our real estate and actually a 5% decrease on our personal property. The revenue numbers for this have been incorporated in the budget that you'll be deciding on later. And the overall tax levy increase, because we saw a lower number, is up about 1% from the previous year. So overall revenue numbers are up very little. We actually reduced the budget on the revenue side because we anticipated about a 2% increase on this.
All right, any questions? Councilmember Smith.
So it makes some sense, the, the drop in the personal property, it's a pretty big fall, um, 6% fall off. But I, help me understand, when, when does real estate become valued for the tax rolls? Is it, once it's certificate of occupancies issued? Because we've got a lot being built or finished up building and it seems like, I mean, new construction counts toward this, not just rising value.
New construction is basically set aside for the, um, the increase limit.
Right.
Um, and same thing with personal property. Actually, that's just considered separate from the, the restriction of the Hancock Amendment. As far as when that goes on the, the tax rolls, I, I would have to double check with the county on that. I don't have that answer.
Gotcha. It just. Yeah, it just seems like we went up 0.03%, yet we have 23rd and Swift, we've got backyard and mill house apartments have all gone up.
Almost all that has been abated though.
So it's not tax role, it's only on the tax role percentage wise. They're not that abated, like they're.
A lot of them are in ownership of the city, which removes them completely from the tax rolls.
Interesting, because they're piloted, they're not, there it is, there it is. And so that doesn't count. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Saper.
Uh, is, the drop in personal property, was there anything outstanding, like certain lines of business were going out or closing or anything else? Anything that stood out?
If I had to guess, and I don't, I don't have like the data for all of these.
Go ahead and guess.
My guess is, my guess is part of it might be Cerner. Some of that stuff might have dropped off with the tax rolls. Some of their equipment, personal property, that, that's the best guess. And when I talked to the, um, collector's office before, it's usually a business is why you see either a big decrease or a big increase. I believe a couple of years ago, it went up by about 6 million.
Yeah, most of it.
There's always a lot of fluctuation in that particular one, but if I had to venture a guess, I'd, I'd say it's something like that.
Okay. Which would, which would be the next question. So obviously Cerner, uh, city no longer earns this, the Cerner, what is education experience, learning, building there? Is that incorporated into these numbers or will that just be something that's calculated later?
I, that is one that I'm, I'm not sure of either because it.
Because of the timing of that paperwork, it won't be assessed until 2025, so that is not reflected. Those actions, those previous actions from the council are not reflected in the 24 numbers.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Other questions? If not, we now have a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item, please step up to the podium. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. With that, we are on the item. Is there a motion to approve the item?
Move to approve. Oh, was it first, first reading?
Yeah.
First reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for general municipal purposes and for special purposes and setting the tax levy on taxable property within the limits of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri for the year 2024.
I move that bill number 7873 be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number 9670.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Saper.
Yes.
Councilmember McGraw.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
And ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for general municipal purposes and for special purposes and setting the tax levy on taxable property within the limits of the city of North Kansas City, Missouri for the year 2024.
Next item, please. Oh, 14, year in budget amendment resolution based on 2024 staff audit of accounts, resolution two, four, zero, six, six. Welcome back.
Thank you. So we're in kind of this period now, we're ending 2024, next week starts our fiscal year, 2025 year. We're going through in advance of the audit and looking at accounts. Most of these are, are accounts that we are obligated to pay and seeing if we need to clean up any budget authority. So that's what the majority of these, uh, these expenses are. The first one is range supplies, which is actually, um, an expense that we have not made yet, but we're taking advantage of some pricing. We've updated it in the, uh, in our projections and there's a reduction in the 2025 budget to recognize this. So if this one is approved, there is a check in tonight's payable ordinance that would go out tomorrow. If not, we would pull it. The, the other accounts that we included on here are workers' compensation, which we get that, I cannot remember the name of the, the company that we work with to, for that premium, but we get that, we pay it, and then we allocate it based off of a, a set of experiences and ratings by department. In the general fund, there was one, uh, one department that went over our initial budget on that. This actually puts it in our, our interdepartmental account to account for that budget authority. General liability is very similar. We get that and we have to pay it within a couple of days or else we're getting calls about, um, our, our coverage getting, being lapsed. So we pay that and then I go back and do a reconciliation of that with various factors for our personal, or for our property tax, inland marine, cybersecurity, um, and a, and a few other factors. And that, because we've seen double digit increases, that one did come in over budget. The next one is the Water Main Emergency Repair Project. So we set up an emergency project for the, the main break from last month. And this is just kind of formalizing that project. We anticipate that expenses would come from savings that we've had in some of the programmatic projects that we have in the water fund. If not, um, we would have a different discussion on how to fund that. Right now, nothing has been paid out of it, but we have seen some encumbrances come in to that account. And so this is just establishing the budget authority for that one. And then the last one, our legal fees related to, to ongoing litigations. All of these were included in our budget projections for this year, so this is cleaning up the, the budget authority for those accounts. And we'll continue to look at it as we finish the new year, or finish this fiscal year, we'll go back, we'll have other accounts that will, um, will accrue back to the current year and we'll review and make sure that we're covered on everything.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none. I flipped my page. Where we at? Oh, 14, yes. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Number 15, adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2025 city budget, resolution number 24 dash zero five eight.
All right, there we go. That's you.
All right. Oh, excuse me. Uh, so, so you have there in the memo list from every meeting since we started reviewing the budget. You know, importantly, from the September 3rd meeting, we listed items that we incorporated or changes we made in the budget based on the discussion. Primarily, um, you know, we added, um, other legal costs than River Forest Park, that project and as well as the Public Safety Memorial. Those were the, the three big things. But, uh, you know, I, I also added in, um, based on, on other information that we have received, since September 3rd, we made some adjustments, particularly in the fire, um, fire budget related to, you know, the salaries, their benefits, whatnot adjustments that, that correlate, um, with discussions. And then you heard from Nick tonight, uh, talking about the range supplies increase in 2024, we decreased it in 2025, as he mentioned, down to 5,000 from, I believe it was 13,8, 13,9. And then, uh, excuse me. And then based on information that we received last week at MML related to home doc, doc cities, we increased our dues in the 25 budget from 15,000 to 20,000. Uh, the, the home doc cities approved the bylaws last week to increase the dues. So for the city, it'll go up to 20. But we're, uh, we're excited to get to this point. Budget year's right around the corner, but yeah, if there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
All right, questions?
Move to approve.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
More a comment than a question, I think. First, thank you to C staff for getting the budget together. I know that takes a lot of work, but, um, on, on the budget itself, I'm not sure I have the most up to date numbers after those kind of last minute amendments there, but some numbers I saw, I think for the upcoming fiscal year, we projected a deficit in the general fund of about $2.5 million and ran just, or projected about a $1.7 million deficit for the current fiscal year budget to. You know, I don't think we're at a place where as a council, we need to be making cuts or anything like that, but I also don't think it's a stretch to say that running a deficit every year, you know, clearly isn't sustainable. So, you know, I don't want to end up in a situation where North Kansas City needs to either look at raising taxes or cutting the services that residents are used to. So it's just, you know, something to monitor going forward over the next year and years, you know, especially as amendments, that type of thing come in for additional costs. Just, you know, right now, we're in a decent financial position, but just need to be careful of that.
Absolutely.
I'd agree. Definitely have the fund balances, but in your head. I mean, eventually it's going to come, there'll have to be some tightening here somewhere.
Yes.
Trying to find the fund balances, but I'm struggling. There we go, I've seen them enough. You all know what they are, I don't have to go over it again, you've been staring at it now for many months. There we go. Other comments? Seeing none, it's a resolution. We have a motion for councilmember Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
There we go. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Number 16, request to terminate contract for demolition services with Dean Demolition LLC, resolution number 24 dash zero six zero.
Move to approve the resolution.
We can do that as well.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking, I was going to ask one more time if councilmember comments real quick, since it's right to it, any comments? Seeing none, there we go. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item.
Item 17, request to approve a contract with Industrial Salvage and Wrecking Company Incorporated for demolition services at 1400 Notaway, resolution number 24 dash zero six five.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any councilmember comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item.
Consideration of trash service bids.
Somebody starting this one? Whoa, sorry, I, I thought that's who you're, you're getting ready to go.
Just waiting for the.
Sorry.
The point.
Boom. Go ahead, please.
Mayor, members of the council, on September 11th, as you know, we opened the bids for trash services. We received three bids submitted by GFL Waste Management and Jim's Disposal. You know, as you could see in the bid comparison that I attached, um, there were different, there were base bids submitted as well as, as some alternates, um, based purely on, sorry, I'm moving this around where I can see. That's all right. Looking at the alternates, um, that were submitted, waste management was the apparent low. They did, uh, their alternate includes every other week recycling, um, the, the yard waste once a week and then bulky items, um, as well as the city facilities, churches, and Snake Saturday, uh, Christmas tree pickup was included as well. They also included, um, I'd say, uh, oh, I think what I said were exceptions to our contract or, um, I think I've since learned that, that they're negotiable, um, so we would need to explore that. But, um, then looking at Green for Life, as I said, there's, uh, going straight off the, if, if we're going off the base bid and everything's submitted, then they would be the apparent low. But they also submitted an alter, an alternate that, uh, sorry, I'm going back to, um, my tab. The, uh, sorry. There we go. There we go. Oh, of course, their alternate was a five year, going to a five year agreement with, an increase related to CPI, um, not to exceed 5%. So, um, also in the memo, you saw that Kansas City, uh, through email, had, had submitted a proposal, um, to take over trash. Now, theirs did not include city facilities or the churches, so we would have to look at that.
Oh, councilmember Smith.
So looking over the, the comparison chart here, uh, right now, and Kansas City's, to be clear, Kansas City's email proposal came in before any of these bids were opened, so there wasn't a, they looked at these other numbers and threw a number lower. But they are about $100,000 under the lowest bid and that, like, like Mike pointed out, does not include city facilities. I have, uh, reached back out to their head of public works to see what that number would be, uh, so that we can have a true apples to apples comparison. We don't have that number yet. The other piece that, uh, it, we don't, we would not be getting the weekly yard waste pickup. There would be, um, twice a year, you would get the yard waste. City still does the leaf vacuum, which is, I think, what people are conflating with yard waste. So the leaves still get vacuumed up, it's just the, the brush and the sticks and the, the bundled stuff would be twice a year. And there's the availability, the drop off in the bottoms, um, which, if you. the availability of the drop-off in the bottoms, if you have a trailer or truck or know somebody that does. The other thing that Kansas City's proposal mentions is a 2% annual increase, not really bracketed by anything, just 2%. What else? Let's see. We're working on pricing. And I have, I've reached out to a few people who live in Kansas City proper and have heard very good things about their new trash service. They rolled out the bigger bins. They've done a lot of improvements once they in-house'd it. And to me, it just makes a lot of sense because we are fully surrounded by Kansas City. We could fold right into what they're doing, and it seems like an easy transition. They could have the bins rolled out at a moment's notice just about, so that's my thought.
I'd say my one problem with Kansas City is we had a clear bidding process for many reasons. Ethically, transparency, kind of all the above, and they chose not to submit to that program, even though, as you noted, they had numbers early. In with, that always includes agreeing to contract, agreeing to all these other things, which I don't see in the Kansas City proposal at all, whether or not they're fine with anything on that front. In addition to having a more comprehensive plan, which at least two of the three bidders at least submitted a full comprehensive plan, I do think twice a year, yard waste would be a problem. And telling our residents, now you got to take it somewhere as well, there's already going to be a loss of service with going once a week on trash pickup anyways. And then you're going to further reduce yard waste in the bulky pickup rather than having them come through the city all the time, which, again, folks have become accustomed to. Now, we're going to further reduce service and so you have to call, I guess, Kansas City to have that done. And then there's questions of billing. How do you bill that? Who's responsible for these sort of complaints? What are guarantees on service levels? All these sort of things we include in the contracts and in these bids. I just don't see anything about that in the Kansas City blurb here. Councilmember Garland?
I don't think we should consider Kansas City at all. They didn't submit an application. They submitted an email. I understand Councilmember Smith has been talking to them. However, all they are offering is once-a-week trash pickup and once-a-week recycling. I lived in Kansas City for a long time. I understand that they have improved their services, but their services at the time that I was there for over 20 years were not great. So, given the fact that they have not actually submitted any kind of application in the structure that we have asked for, I don't think that we should consider them. I also don't think that, I do think that weekly or biweekly or even monthly bulky, or not bulky, lawn and leaf pickup is, it's not trivial. I think a lot of people have leaves, but I think a lot of people also have gardens and they have plants, and not everybody has a truck, not everybody knows somebody who has a truck. So I think that that's a service that our, that our community has grown to enjoy. I think that we're already asking our residents to go down from twice a week, and I understand that there's some feeling among some council people that that is essentially an entitlement. I do not feel that way. I feel like that is something that has been a benefit of living in this community. It is really nice to have that. I'm also fully aware that going down to a once-a-week pickup is, I will be fine with that, too. I mean, I really do set my trash out once a week, but it's really nice to have the option, if I forget it on a day, to put it out another day. I can get used to doing it once a week. But I think that asking our residents to reduce their services by an incredible amount, which is what Kansas City proposal would do, is doing a disservice to North Kansas City. I think we should look at one of the other bids that actually tries to maintain a... Oh, tries to maintain a quality level of service within the constraints that the bidders have offered us.
I would also have concerns about the lack of yard waste pickup in the Kansas City proposal, or I guess, it's not a bid, I'm not quite sure exactly how it came to us, but however we got it, the lack of yard waste concerns me a little bit. Over in the avenues, Ward Three, I've seen when we get heavy rains, just standing water in the streets, and, you know, I'm concerned if there's less incentive for pickup of yard clippings and that type of thing, it's just going to be clogging those gutters and leading to more, you know, potential flooding issues. Also, it just concerns me, I'm not sure exactly how it would work, but, you know, one, we don't have this actual contract with KC Mo right now. We're a little bit in a time crunch. I think our current contract with the provider expires at the end of this month with some, you know, opportunity for a transition, but not a huge run of time there to figure this out. So not having contractual terms at this point is concerning. And then also, just if there were to be non-performance issues, I'm not sure how that would work with Kansas City, Missouri. I'm not sure we would have a lot of leverage there.
All right. We've addressed that, or we're going to address any, one, there, Councilmember Safer?
I can only enthusiastically support the last two speakers. It is an improper bid in the process we had. Number two, yard waste is very important, and it's not, it's not a luxury item. It's critical to maintaining the cleanliness, the sanitary nature of North Kansas City, and the clogging of our drains, as was pointed out earlier. So I see no reason to consider that.
I guess since we're all hitting on Kansas City.
As a bid.
Yeah. My only concern is, like, I feel like the explicit direction was to solicit bids and not to go out and get other, whatever you would even consider this. It was to go out and get bids from folks through this process. And so that's why I don't even really like them on the chart, because it was never really the council direction to work outside deals either. But further comments? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, okay. So to clarify how we came about with Kansas City's numbers, without getting into things that I probably shouldn't talk about, we came to a point of crisis where it was very unclear what was next. And I reached out to Kansas City to see, because we did not know, and we were coming up right on a deadline, what was possible. Like, we got to have our trash picked up. And this was before we talked about actually putting out a bid. This was, this was trying to figure out, is there some way that, come the end of our current contract, our trash will get picked up? And through that exchange of emails, numbers came through, and these are the numbers that came through with that for this service level. And after that, we talked about doing a bid process, and they asked, like, should we throw it through the biz? Well, we have your numbers. And that's, that's probably my fault. We have your numbers. I don't know what the benefit of is to go through and resubmit what you've already sent over, but that's why it didn't come through the RFP. So I'll take ownership of that.
There's a lot of things included in RFP process that are, just aren't included in their email either, though.
Sure. And they, I don't, I don't know that we worked, we didn't get that deep. And I thought that after this process, if there's interest in getting pricing on facilities for the city, on asking about, hey, is it possible to pick up brush more often, that that would be some conversation we could have after. We never just jump right on a bid. There's always a post-bid interview process, and...
And I guess my item is, there's really no authority from council for anyone to solicit numbers from Kansas City, period. That becomes a problem. I mean, it's a governing body that collectively worked together. Individuals asking for numbers from Kansas City is a, it's a governance problem. There is no authority from council for anyone, staff, council, mayor, to go to Kansas City and ask for numbers.
So this is, this is a decision that's being made by the council?
But now, now we're starting to shift. But that's a whole nother, this is where we need to get our ethics ordinance done eventually, because this is, yeah. I mean, the body has to work as a body and works with the authority of the body, and there is really no authority to go out and solicit numbers from Kansas City. That's why, another reason I consider it invalid as well. Councilmember Clark?
Okay. I mean, I hear all that. I think, but I do understand why we went about it that way, or why Jesse May, Councilmember Smith, would have reached out, because I think it was, you know, we were in a scramble mode. Yeah, right? Because we can't go into it, but we can go into it. But we were in a scramble mode, and I wouldn't say I totally fault that process. I could, I could see where it's like, hey, that's just not how we want to do things, but I don't know if it was seated and being, you know, trying to work outside of the framework, I guess. I was interested in Kansas City's proposal, but I also understand, I mean, I'm one that would love to see us, you know, not produce as much waste and really truncate, not the services, but just try to really dial in, because when you think about a truck coming down a road and there's maybe five houses that might have yard waste out of however, what is, 1,200 some-eyed homes, it, I can see that becoming wasteful for them and the trips up and down blocks where nobody's there. But yeah, I also understand that if there is no contract in place where we don't have any specifics and outlines and things like that, but it sounds like Councilmember Smith maybe, you know, led him to believe, by accident, it sounds like, of, hey, we got your numbers, we're looking for numbers. So I think that's what makes this a little tricky, is because the Kansas City bid option isn't really complete. I don't know that I've heard good feedback on the second one, is that, what's the WM, Waste Management?
Yeah.
Obviously, we all loved JIMs, but the price is, you know, almost double of what it was. So I, yeah, I'm having a tough time because I feel like if these are just our choices and that's it, you know, and knowing that potentially Kansas City didn't get a full sort of opportunity, I guess, to submit the bid, maybe they did ask and we just assumed. I don't know. I don't know. I guess this is just tough for me, because I obviously wanted to see more from Kansas City, because they left off any kind of city trash. I'd want to see what that actual number is. I don't know where we handle it from here, because I know we're in a bum rush moment here, where we got to make a decision within.
Which I'd assume, generally, if someone left off half the bid, which was the city trash, which was the requirement required as part of the base bid, I mean, if people leave off part of the base bid, normally you reject the bid, probably. They wouldn't make it very far in a scoring, and you don't do half the bidding process. Not, not even contract, not even all the other stuff.
Okay, sure.
They just didn't do the basic base bid.
Okay.
Stuff that was on here.
That's fair.
Yeah. No, and I get...
Yeah.
That the series of motions, I got to that point, but then that's also, but kind of comes the problem in having a different process from the rest as well, is completeness on some of this. Oh, we got all kinds of, Councilmember Garland?
I just kind of liken it to hiring somebody, and we are going to, these are people who are asking us to give them a significant amount of money, and I think following the instructions that we provided and showing a serious effort to try to get them, to get us to, to get them to appeal to us, they, you know, court us in their direction, hey, here are all the things that we can provide for you, and we're following your instructions, and we're filling out the right paperwork, and we're really trying to be a good partner with you. I think that shows a seriousness and a level of commitment to the community that, that we want to see when we see, you know, job applicants or vendor applicants, or, you know, we're going out and trying to hire a contractor for our home or something. We want to see that they are serious about the relationship. And regardless of how the, the information from Kansas City came along, once the bid, the RFP was out there, they knew it was out there, and they still didn't submit anything else, as far as I know. So I also respect the desire to have, like, less trucks on the road and not, you know, that represents a lot of pollution and a lot of work and moving around for companies that might necessarily not need to do that kind of, you know, that kind of work on every single street. But, you know, in a place like the avenues, where there are potentially hundreds of people who have yard waste every week, then I think it's a good thing to include that. But at this point, I think the only bids we can consider are GFL, WM, and JIMs, and of those, I personally think that the GFL bid is the, is the one that I would go with if I were hiring from this list.
Oh, I thought you were getting... There you go. Councilmember Safer?
Yeah. We have three legitimate bids, and we need to move forward of those three legitimate bids and discuss those and the pros and cons of each. And there are pros and cons of each, and I suggest we move forward.
What's your con?
I think...
Do you have, like, the pros and cons of each that you want to talk through?
I think we should take them individually and go through them.
Yeah. I mean, just at first glance, if I'm only looking at GFL, WM, and JIMs, Waste Management, I would look at GFL as well.
Yeah.
Just right off the go. Discuss.
You said just off, you said, sorry. Which, which one did you say?
GFL.
Okay. Sorry, I just didn't catch that part. Councilmember Fitzgerald, we'll go around.
On the GFL contract, I see the as-bid number and then also an alternate five-year agreement for a lower starting number with an annual escalation. I haven't seen the full bids before, really, tonight, and just so, I'm trying to understand from the summary schedule, is the as-bid column like a one-year term or what? I'm trying to understand the difference between these, other than the, you know, the term and the pricing difference, sir?
The as-bid was, was bids as we put them out in the packet, they, when they filled that out. They also included the section of the memo where I, where I put GFL's alternate proposal was what, that was just copy and paste what they included as an alternate. So, so yeah, the as-bid was, was our base bid. Once-a-week trash, once-a-week recycling, the yard waste, March through December, I think March, I think it's March, the yard waste as specified, thank you, and then the bulky items, once a month. So that's, that was the difference in those. When I say as-bid, I guess I could put, yeah, as specified.
Okay. So as-bid is this contract template with the five-year term in here and 2% adjustment, and then, at least with GFL, the alternate bid is pretty similar scope of services?
Yes. Yeah. It's weekly trash recycling, residential trash outside of carts won't be collected, unlimited amounts of residential recyclables, up to 10 bag bundles of yard waste, weekly, March 1 through December 31. Provide collection of up to five bulk items on one collection day each month. And then residents can contract separately for extra trash cart at a cost of $10 monthly on their cost, the resident's cost. And then trash overage stickers will be available, I believe, for anything outside the cart. And then we've got weekly trash and recycling collection from city facilities. They've got the pricing down there, the same that I, that I put in the, and then Snake Saturday bag collection, as described, the 10-yard roll-off, 20-yard roll-off, and then white goods set out for bulky item, must be certified free of CFCs, and then New Year's, Independence Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas are their holidays observed. And then following that is Waste Management's alternate proposal as well. And representatives from both are here, if there are questions about GFL and Waste Management. I don't believe...
There you go. I guess we didn't...
JIMs is, JIMs is not here, I don't believe. I'll look and make sure.
Okay. There are, right? There are representatives from both, in case anyone has questions, right? Okay. Sorry, I don't know who I'm looking at here. Okay. There we go. There's at least the, okay. Was there any questions directly for them, since they are in attendance?
For GFL, I'm still struggling to understand the difference between the alternate five-year agreement and then the, I guess, the five-year as-bid agreement. Would you be able to walk us through some of the, I mean, I know there's a difference in pricing and structure, but are, is there, I'm not seeing difference in services between the two, is what I'm trying to understand.
Municipal contract manager for GFL, and I'm joined by Jason Fetters. He's our sales manager. The difference primarily on the, is the collection of waste. The as-bid involves, the bid document asks for unlimited trash, and so that was why the number is bigger. But generally, we have... But generally, we have had great luck doing cart contents only and we, you know, it works great in Smithville, Riverside, Belton, Smith, peculiar. It's more fair. If somebody routinely puts out extra waste, then their neighbors aren't subsidizing that. But if I routinely put out, you know, a couple times a year, I got a couple bags, then I can put a $2 or $5 sticker on and be done with it. But that's where the main difference is, is just the volume of waste.
So basically, one cart per household per week under the alternate bid versus some additional under the ASBID?
Yeah, and also, sitting here, I realize that, and this is my fault, I'm the one who put the thing together. We always, when we do these cart contents things and do yard waste collection weekly, we always have two amnesty weeks, not for the yard waste, but for the trash. Like usually, it's after Christmas and after 4th of July, you can put out a handful of extra bags outside the cart, couple of weeks a year, so, yeah.
Am I reading this correctly too, in that the ASBID, there is no bulky pickup, but the alternate, there is?
No, bulk isn't all of that. Bulk is just included in the price.
Yeah, I apologize. When you see a zero on that comparison, that means it's included. I should have mentioned that earlier.
Okay.
Further questions? Or either? All right, thank you for answering those. Further comments, questions?
Oh, we do have a question.
Yeah, please.
So sorry that you're going back to your seat, but with GFL, hey, come on back. Is it a pick it up and dump it? The truck itself does that or is it manually pick it up and dump?
No, no, it's a totally cool pick it up and dump it kind of situation, except for the yard waste and the bulk. That's always gonna go in rear load.
Okay.
I guess the alleys, would that be the same sort of rear load there?
Excuse me?
We have some alleys too, some tighter areas. Would you rear load that or would you be able to use your?
We would, we would try to, try to automate if possible.
The most as you can, yeah, yeah, got it. Okay. I know a few of those are kinda tight. Okay, thank you. All right, there we go, further comments? Now, I guess our next step would be?
So again, just to summarize, the GFL, the difference is that one includes sort of, the ASBID is including sort of unlimited trash if it spills over the bin, if it's an extra bag on the side, some boxes laying on the side, things like that. That's in the ASBID. The other is the more conservative strict, it's gotta be in the bin or it doesn't get picked up, or you need to have stickers. There's like an, an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm making sure we all know that too, right? Like we're all in agreement, okay.
Okay, so since the conversation's slowing, generally, the next step would be council direct staff to select and work out a contract with whoever council decides here and then bring that back in, hopefully seven days, but probably, maybe a little longer, but.
Might be the second meeting, but we'll shoot, we'll try.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, would love to have it resolved as soon as possible. I guess with that, further council comments, questions? Or is there a motion by some person? Councilmember Safer? Do you have a motion?
I think I'm curious if you guys have an opinion on which one of the GFL, like the ASBID where it's unlimited or the five-year where it's more conservative?
My opinion is the five-year.
Okay. That's what I was leaning toward too, but I also, you know, was curious. I mean, I would move that we move in the direction of the five-year agreement with GFL.
Second.
Further council member comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item.
Who made the motion in the second on the?
Councilmember Clark made the motion, Councilmember Smith made the second. In all, thank you. Thank you.
Item 19, consideration of an ordinance for the First Amendment to First Amended and Restated Development Agreement dated December 8, 2021, between the City of North Kansas City and Star N K C Propco LLC regarding 23rd and Swift Street Apartment Project. Bill number 7872, ordinance number 9669.
All right, who is tackling this one? Mr. Tom Barzy, although it's pretty much as described here, I think, in the, on the ordinance.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I think the easiest way to sum this up is that the contract that we have, the First Amended and Restated Development Agreement entered into in December of 2021, has a requirement that the project be substantially complete, as defined in the agreement, honored before September the 25th, 2024, which is, as you know, is tomorrow. There were, and it has been requested by their legal counsel through Steve Sparks, who had drafted our original agreement here, has been requested that that be extended for till, basically till the end of February. As you know, there were some hiccups along the way, but it's my understanding and talking to staff that good progress has been made and you folks can see what's going on, you would know probably as well as I would that way. And project, the project just isn't done yet. And, and so this is what has been requested, that we amend the time. The one thing that Mr. Sparks and I, though, insisted upon was that you're gonna give them the extra time, we're not gonna give them another 120 more days to, in the event then, they're in default that, you know, they'd have 120 more days to cure it. So they have agreed that that cure period would be reduced to 30 days. And it's my, I think my memo explains specifically what they've requested. And so it's my understanding that representatives are here from Star N K C Propco, the company that's involved here with developing this. And so if you have questions, I'd suggest though, unless there are specific questions on this amendment, I'd suggest though that you direct those questions to them.
All right. Oh, thank.
Rather than staff.
Sounded like you were concluding that. Well, I was gonna say, do we have any questions for staff first on the, I don't know whose head is, okay. Now we'll try this again. There you go, Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, I mean, if I understand it right, it just seems like it's kind of a wash. As far as time, it's essentially a wash.
It is.
Yeah, that's not the legalese way to say it, but in the way my simple mind speaks, so, yeah, I'll let other people comment.
Councilmember Smith?
Certainly understand the ask, and when you came in last time, you told us things were moving forward and streets getting cleaned up, curbs getting poured, and you've been a man of your word, so I appreciate all that and I'd be happy to approve this as it's written in.
First reading.
Second.
All right, further?
A question for city staff, trying to reconcile, you know, there's been a lot of changing items with this, but at one point, I know a stop work order was issued related to code violations for right-of-way work. And I think at that July meeting, we were told no certificates of occupancy would be issued while that stop work order is in place. Has, I think in the memo, it said some temporary occupancy items were about to be issued or issued or had been issued. Has that stop work order been removed?
There is no temporary or permanent certificate of occupancy for any use for the tenants to move in for living. There is a temporary certificate of occupancy for them to show the modeling and touring and storage, as far as I know. On the stop work order, I believe it is in the process for being lifted at this point because they're still working on the right-of-way. As you might notice, they have mailed over and put down asphalt for 25th and they're working down the schedule to finish the other roads. So we have not completely lifted the stop work order, but it's in progress right now.
So I'm still, that's, what's outstanding on the stop work order?
Oh, the outstanding in the, for the stop work order, there are actually two items. One is the storm water prevention. That item has been cleaned up, as far as I know. And the other item was the damage in the construction item in our city right-of-way. So as part of that, we have entered into a discussion with the general contractor and the ownership with an agreement to finish the work within the right-of-way and restaging everything inside of their own property and open up, that's where you guys experienced, open up the sidewalk and mail over the perimeter where the public right-of-ways are, including 25th, 23rd, Buchanan, Swift, over there, except a small portion along 23rd, which allows temporary construction access to finish up the swimming pool and slowly wrap up the project because how this particular site plan lays out, the buildings are surrounding the perimeter, so they have to have a way to close it out once, when they finish the swimming pool. So the temporary construction access is still there. This is why 23rd, as you see, is not completely finished yet.
So until that is done?
Until that is done.
Then we're gonna keep that, although that's a byproduct of just doing construction, basically.
So basically, we're gonna keep the stop record order there. So, because one of the reasons is they have not completely satisfied the right-of-way work that we have been discussing with them. Like I said, there is still mail over, asphalt work.
Got it, okay.
As far as I know, they are scheduling to finish that by the end of this week, so there are still items hanging over there. And we're not issuing any temporary certificate of occupancy, as we said before, for anybody to move in until that is completed.
We feel comfortable having people, you know, walk through, being in the building, doing that sort of stuff to some extent, at least parts of it, but not staying, so, yeah.
Exactly, not the entire site, for only.
Yeah, yeah, the portion that it's been issued for, yeah, yeah.
And the certificate of, the temporary certificate of occupancy specified out which buildings, which areas, what uses you can do and when is the expiration date.
But they have been checking those boxes we've talked about over the last.
Yes, they have been checking those boxes we've been talking about.
Will any, sorry, I'm still kinda confused on the differences between the certificates of occupancy, but will any certificates of occupancy allowing residents to move in be issued before the stop work order is fully addressed?
No, it won't be.
Okay. Councilmember Alvarez?
I'm back to the original, to some of the previous statements. I would agree with extending this because progress has been made, even though it's maybe slower than we would like, but I still see that progress has been being made and I would like to see if we can't work together to get, get this finished.
I'd agree. It does look like it's starting to come together. Seeing landscaping is always good. All right, what do we got? Anything else? With that, is there a first reading? Oh, yeah. You got those, okay. Now we're all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
An ordinance approving First Amendment to First Amended and Restated Development Agreement by and between the City of North Kansas City, Missouri and Star N K C Propco LLC and authorizing the execution thereof on behalf of the city by the mayor.
I move that bill number 7872 be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number 9669.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Safer?
Yes.
Councilmember McGron?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
An ordinance approving First Amendment to First Amended and Restated Development Agreement by and between the City of North Kansas City, Missouri and Star N K C Propco LLC and authorizing the execution thereof on behalf of the city by the mayor.
Thank you. Next item, number 20.
Number 20, extension of Missouri Department of Revenue Project Exemption Certificate Tax Exemption Status for Star N K C Propco LLC until December 31st, 2024.
Let me ask a question on this one. Why not just extend this to February 28th to match the previous item? That would seem to make the most sense rather than doing this exercise in a couple months, but that's entirely up to council, but unless we wanna talk about this again in seven more times? Or we just approve it either way?
And I think I've kinda made some of my points clear on this at past meetings, but I'm still hesitant to continue to extend tax breaks. I know that the entity has made efforts to clean up and finish some work, but a stop work order's been in place for over a year now and it's still not done. You know, are they really being a good partner of the city?
Councilmember McGron?
I agree with Councilmember Fitzgerald. I, I honestly, I'm, this is the last time I wanna approve this and I will only approve it through the end of December, so buy all your stuff. Unless other people wanna approve it if you come back, but I feel like we have been asked to keep like rewarding not particularly great performance with a benefit that isn't a requirement, it's a benefit. So here's your one last benefit, as far as I'm concerned, from me.
All right. Should just ask for a motion. With that, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
There we go, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There we go. Got those? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And is this just through December?
December 30th, yeah, 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 there's no amendment or anything on that, that's just, there we go. Next item, please.
An ordinance approving parking lot lease between the city and the First Christian Church of North Kansas City, Missouri. Bill number 7874, ordinance number 9671.
All right, what do we got? Any questions on this one? I guess I should ask, I don't know if someone's gonna present something on this or will you approve it?
First reading.
First reading, is there a second?
Second.
Further council member comments?
I'm gonna have questions on everything tonight, potentially, but.
You gotta do this for the motion.
Do we, do we have any signage directing that this is city public parking to this lot?
Yeah, there's a few signs there on the street as you come up. Is it Erie there?
I wasn't sure.
And I think there's a couple in the parking lot as well, say that and the Times.
But like on armor or somewhere?
On armor, I don't think there is on armor.
Okay, it's set back a little bit, I was just trying to picture it.
You're right, it's tucked. Yeah. Good lot. Yeah.
It's kinda behind Lucky Dragon, if I'm picturing in the right spot.
We could add some to armor. I think armor actually has the wayfinding signage that.
Armor has a city park, the wayfinding sign that as part of the signage package that we talked about before with that rusty industrial looking one, it's pointing to the city parking lot behind the.
Erie.
Behind, yeah, Erie, behind the screen land over there. But there is no particular parking sign on armor pointing at.
For this one, right.
For this particular one at the church.
We could add a smaller one, request it, I guess, but yeah.
I wouldn't be opposed to a parking sign there, but I'm not sure how much that costs or how much effort it takes to get one up.
It wouldn't be the big decorative ones like we have for the other parking lot, but we could add smaller, like metal signage, yeah.
Blue P with a circle around it.
Okay. See, there wasn't a sign at all not long ago. All right, there was a first and a second. Are there further council member comments? Seeing none, is there a motion for first reading? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
An ordinance adopting and approving a parking lot lease by and between the City of North Kansas City, Missouri as leasing and First Christian Church of North Kansas City, Missouri as lesser for the lease of a certain parking lot generally located at 2011 Fayette in the City of North Kansas City, Missouri.
I move that bill number 7874 be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number 9671.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Safer?
Yes.
Councilmember McGron?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yep.
Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
And ordinance adopting and approving a parking lot lease by and between the City of North Kansas City, Missouri as leasing and the First Christian Church of North Kansas City, Missouri as lesser for the lease of a certain parking lot generally located at 2011 Fayette in the City of North Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Number 22, approving accounts due and payable by the city through August 30th, 2024.
First reading.
Second.
Bill number 7875, ordinance number 9672.
All right, there was first, second, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Next item, please.
Number tw-...
Never mind.
Number 22, approving accounts due and payable by the city through August 30th, 2024.
First reading.
Second.
Bill number 7875, ordinance number 9672.
All right, there was first, second, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
That was the wrong date. It's actually through September 20th. An ordinance authorizing payment for certain accounts due and payable by the city through September 20th, 2024.
September 20th.
Oh, as of last Friday?
Yes.
Or as of last...
I move that bill numbers, are we okay?
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
I move that bill number 7875 be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number 9672.
Second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Safer?
Yes.
Councilmember McGroan?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing payment for certain accounts due and payable by the city through September 20th, 2024.
Thank you. Staff comments? What do we got?
All right, um, tonight you have, we'll say the monthly income report is back. I apologize for that last month, but we have the other normal reports. Shu has a comment tonight, and then Nick Hawkins will speak about one of the lines in here, accounts due and payable ordinances.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. We did receive a request from Harris the Casino this afternoon that they would like to host a music festival this Saturday, which requires a short-term conditional use permit. They must know we have a city council meeting today. So we have reviewed the application and the drawing and have been in touch with police and fire department. We have received the comments from them, we're generally in support, so I would recommend approval with conditions. I know it's harder to ask these that you haven't even seen the details, but generally what is gonna happen is they anticipate 700 to 1,200 people to host a public music festival in their hotel parking lot, which will have served liquor and food and as well as a musical stage and parties. So if you wanna know the details, or if you wanna go.
Does our website, you say you must apply within 21 days of your event? Do we have it on there wrong?
We strongly encourage people, and the particular...
Seems like everyone's on a roll.
... amendment will be placed down the...
Yeah.
... planning commission agenda this coming, well, next Thursday, actually, so hopefully we can get that cleared up.
You get an expediated process if you file it. There you go.
I know, Councilmember Smith is...
Councilmember Safer may feel a way here. Councilmember Safer.
Did they have any explanation of, did they have any explanation why they were so tardy?
No, they did not.
They just expected us to roll over and grant?
I do believe there's some business at times, and I don't know their case, but as I've talked to other businesses, that seem confused over some of this. Sometimes they don't even really know they need that. I'm doing something on my own property, in my own parking lot, I'm not gonna be on anyone else's, you know, area. Why would I need the blessing of the city to do a thing on my own property?
Right. This one is a little...
Some people have that at times. I don't know if that's their case, but I know that does hit at times.
Thank you. That is possible.
Possible, yeah, yeah, definitely a possible.
And I'm not sure it is the explanation.
So do you need an answer from us on...
Yes, I wouldn't need an approval from you.
There we go. I'll ask, is anyone opposed? Okay.
No, police and fire have signed off, and, you know.
Yeah. I guess the standard contingent upon every other approval, I'm making it through, but yes, there you go. Okay, even Councilmember Safer didn't say no, so we're good. Further, staff, Nick, Nick's got, Nick's back again. Welcome back.
Seems to be a popular, a popular finance meeting. So when we were getting ready for the August 20th council meeting, Crystal noticed when we were doing the accounts due and payable, Crystal noticed that one of the checks that was supposed to be on there was not. And so we discovered that there was an issue with the timing of when we were running some of our reports for the payables ordinance, and we were able to fix it for the 20th, but then we went back and looked and saw, it looked like there were a couple other meetings where we ran the reports too early and everything was balancing, so we assumed everything was good, so, but now we see the discrepancy in at least a couple other meetings. So we would, we are going to work with legal to see what fix we need to do to make that right. I've also talked to our auditors, I've had a very brief conversation with them this morning. They basically just said, keep us apprised on what you find and what you're gonna do about it, but it's my error for not catching that when, when checking that ordinance, and I appreciate Crystal for finding it. We've, the subsequent fix is very, very simple, and it's just waiting. Now, instead of doing that ordinance on the Thursday when we run checks, we're gonna wait until Friday so that everything comes through correctly for the ordinance, but we will work with legal and also probably check in with our auditors throughout the process to make sure that we are coming back with a correct fix for this issue.
Councilmember Safer.
Do we have any exposure because of that?
I'm not sure. I mean, a lot of these, a lot of the checks that we do are things that have, this becomes a very procedural generally. There are things that have been approved either through contracts, there are other, there are other things that are exempt from this, so for instance, the premiums that we pay, payroll, those are things that by the time they even reach the ordinance, they've already been paid. So it's just kind of a after-the-fact approval of this. I've spoken to at least one other city, and this was a long time ago, that, you know, these things have happened before, but I wanna make sure from a legal perspective that we think we have a fix, but I wanna make sure that legal is comfortable with it, and it's probably going back and approving previous ones.
I hope you'll come back to us when the fix is in, so to speak. No pun intended.
Yes, and it would, it would come back likely for your approval on, on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
I just wanna make sure I'm kinda understanding, so to put this in my own words, is it just that we got a handful of instances where essentially the entire check run wasn't attached to the ordinance that was approved?
Right. The, the one right before, we run checks every week, so this would be the one, the ones where it's off, it's because of, we ran the report too soon, so it did not include that Thursday one, and again, that's, that's my error for not catching that. When we run the reports, it, everything balances and ties out, but, and, and up to that point, we make sure that it's, every check that we write goes through several levels of approval. The only things that don't go through that are usually, as I mentioned, like the premium payments, the payroll that are paid and posted earlier.
And for the check process, I'm kinda thinking internal controls, are, do those checks generally go out the door, like, before the ordinance is passed?
No, we wait until Wednesday, the day after the council meeting, so the report that we run actually runs through the day after the council meeting, and really, I've gone back, I've looked at subsequent or prior years and just done some, some spot checks. I really think that this is a case of we more recently have just gotten more comfortable with the process and have assumed that running the reports earlier would not have an effect, but it did, and, yeah, that is, that is my error.
Thanks.
There we go. Further, oh, sorry, I did call on you.
I'm just gonna add that, you know, Nick already said it, but it's already been corrected, but we just wanna clean up the three, the three that were found in error. Wanted to make you aware of it tonight and, and let you know what was going on and why we'd be coming back with it, but it has been corrected.
All right, perfect. Good. All right, further, staff comments? There we go, another one, please.
Oh, you go ahead.
Are you, are you on there? She was already internal with us, right? Perfect, there we go, in case I didn't come across, two new officers coming on board shortly. There we go. There's, thank you. Now, Crystal, you got something, we're getting everyone.
No, I just want, I gave all of you a copy of when the flu shots are, so feel free to, to come out and get your flu shot if you haven't already had it, like Mr. Safer.
There we go. All right, further, who's left? I think you fit everybody. Anthony? Done? All right. Been a while since I called on you. Councilmember comments? Now, you started, Councilmember Safer.
Uh, the Equity, the Equity Inclusion Committee is moving forward with review of various city ordinances and policies, and they had, I've been told, a very productive meeting last week regarding a follow-up of previously discussed ordinance, and if city administrator would like to add any comments to that, because I wasn't at that meeting, I was up in the wilds of Lake Superior at that time.
Yes, and I apologize, I meant to bring that up during staff comments and forgot. We did take the camping and sleeping and the right-of-way ordinance to EIC two weeks ago, I believe, two Thursdays ago. There was discussion as far as the steps to be taken. I think that's gonna get, the ordinance is gonna get sent to the EIC to, to insert recommendations. I will say, Justin Holm, who's here tonight, joined at the meeting and explained to him that we do have policy, the policy's already in place as far as the steps that were taken, but I think the EIC might wanna reference that policy, or, or, at, at one point, I'll say, they, they talked about, or it was mentioned adding all the steps in the ordinance, and I explained that the ordinance is more for reference to the policy, not putting the whole policy, such as our personnel policy and guidelines. We don't list them all in the ordinance, we just refer to it, but, but the next EIC meeting is October 10th, so we're gonna send that back out to them and, and review it there, and then hope to have something for you in the camping and sleeping ordinance for the 15th.
So I guess the plan would be then to present that with their recommendations as well?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. That works. I know I was getting ready to call on someone else, but, there we go, thank you. There we go, that's who I'm gonna call on, Councilmember McGroan.
All right, just a couple of comments. My first one is, I, I just want everybody who's watching or the citizens who might be, watch this later, to know that I think one of the most important things that we do up here as a council is make sure that trash is taken away and that water runs and all of those, like, basic city things that we've gotta get done, and it is absolutely not glamorous, but it's something that is really important, and it's, I, I know that all of us up here wanna make a decision that is in line with our residents' expectations. It's the, the character of our community and is also, also fiscally responsible. We are all giving it a lot of thought, and we all wanna make sure that we make the right decision for everybody, so, you know, if you have any, any comments or suggestions, please reach out to us as we consider, you know, the, the moving forward with some of this stuff, but, you know, we're all, we're all doing our best, so. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that I'm really excited about McLean's, which is finally opening on September 30th, and I hope to see many, many, many people there. That's it.
That's definitely on the frequently asked questions list right now. Councilmember Smith.
Nothing out of me tonight.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Um, I believe October 9th is the deadline to register to vote in Missouri, so reminder to do that if you're interested, and talking about the trash stuff, I know cutting service to once a week is not ideal, it's, I'll speak for myself here, but it's not something we'd want to do, it's essentially something the city's forced into based on the decision of one of our vendors.
Very nice way to put it. Councilmember Alvarez.
Yeah, just, I wanna comment also, I think the, the grass clippings and things like that, that's important to pick up, 'cause I know, especially on the avenues, everyone tries to keep their yard up pretty well, that's why we have Yard of the Month in, in our ward, so, just that. And then also, a question about the garage sale that they had, I know it rained quite a bit, so is that extended to this next Saturday? Okay, so I'll have that again this coming Saturday, right? Okay.
Councilmember Clark.
Oh, good point. Board for Resident Jolene Shaw just wanted to say congrats on your appointment to the hospital board. She's been wanting to be on some boards, and I'm excited for her, she's very well qualified, and congrats to officers, I'm, I'm gonna mess up the names, that's what I do, it's my thing. Bundle Bradshaw, did I hear that right? I didn't? Yes! One out of 28 bad, okay, that's it.
Thank you. I got nothing, I got nothing, let's go to executive session here. You wanna read these, or you want me to raffle them off here?
Do you want me to read them?
Number 26, consideration request to hold in recess of an executive session is requested by the city councilor to be held on the state on litigation matter pursuant to Missouri by statute 6100211.
So moved.
Is there a second? Or, yeah, second, is there a second? No second, no executive. I can go home, that's fine, I'm not opposed. Is there a second?
Yes.
For the, the first executive session, number 26. Now there's a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Safer?
Yes.
Councilmember McGroan?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?